There are three formal proposals, but certainly the option of declining all three proposals and staying with the current would be an option available to you.
Okay, that was my Sesame Street question. I was just trying to understand.
Okay.
May I just kind of orient to the spreadsheet?
Yes, please, please.
There's a lot here.
Yes, yes, please.
Okay, and so what you have presented in front of you is capital allocations for the last four years, starting with the 2014-15 and the 2015-16. It is purely historical information. As a point of reference, in 2014-15, our charter school partners received $771.98 per student when you combined our local village and state PICO. In 2015-16, that number decreased to $691.97.
Was that because we had a new school that didn't get PICO?
No, that's because statewide PICO funds, if you look at the bottom, just as a footnote, in 2014-15, the state allocated $100 million to charter schools. In 2015-16, it was $50 million.
Okay.
In 2016-17, which as a point of reference is the last year that capital allocations were solely at the discretion of the Board, starting with the 2017-18, there was a legislative process involved. In the 2016-17 year, the amount per student was $777.98. It also is the first year that I've introduced to you a three-year rolling average. The three-year rolling average was a request from the Board, partially because of the volatility of charter school capital funding, is that it's filled with highs and lows and legislative actions, that by looking at a three-year rolling average, it does allow some level of smoothing. And so in 2016-17, which once again was the last year before legislative involvement, the allocation was $777.98. The rolling average was $726.64. In 2017-18, the state implemented a formula that determined the amount of capital dollars to be allocated. It is important to know that in 2017-18, that the calculation was paid out of local village dollars. And so what you have in front of you is the state PICO. Those were state funds. And then you have both an estimate and a paid. The estimate is essentially what would have happened if the district was, quote, "left to its own devices," in which we allocated about 30% of our capital dollars on a per-student basis, and you combined it with PICO. You'll see that the amount through the state formula was significantly higher. And so in 2017-18, we did the calculation. It's 1,320, but I've also footnoted it there because there is a state report that showed the number at 1335. And so I just, as an interest of full disclosure, the state had it at 1335. Us attempting to recalculate and replicate it, we had it at 1320, but essentially over $1,300 per student. And you'll see the rolling average increased to 927.67. And so we arrive in 2018-19. The legislation, you'll see as you look at your footnotes, is we've gone from essentially $100 million in PICO funds to charter schools in 1415. In 2015-16, it was $50 million. In 2016-17, it was $75 million. In 2017-18, it was $50 million. And in 2018-19, it is in excess of $150 million. I commented in a conference call today with our charter schools. Many of their finance people were on the call, and I don't know how a charter school attempts to project capital. It is very volatile. It is like a yo-yo going up and down. I don't know how you set a budget. My heart goes out to you as you try to work these numbers. And so this is where the options come into play. The legislation allocated PICO dollars to charter schools around the state. If you go back to the 1718 school year, there was great disparity in what charter schools received for capital dollars across the state of Florida. So you saw that number from $200 to over $2,000. The state average was about $544. But you saw great disparity. Matter of fact, 70% of the districts fell beneath the average. That's how wide the range was. And so in an effort to calm that disparity across the state, the state allocated PICO dollars on a per-student basis at about $565 per student, and they did so across the state. So I can tell you, there are a number of charter school operators in the state that are excited because they went from $200 per student to 565. And so in our budget, as the communication that we received initially, which is, we are going to allocate capital dollars to charter out of PICO, we did not include an allocation out of the district budget. And so what you see in 2018-19 is if we solely relied on the state PICO allocation, they would receive about $525 per student, and their rolling average would be 832. And so I would tell you that this valley is as low as the peak was high last year, is that last year, you know, if you look at over a three-year period, they go from 777 up to 1320 and down to 525. And so what I was tasked with is developing another, a number of models for your consideration, and that is the three proposals that are in front of you. The first proposal, Proposal 1, essentially takes and uses 2017-18 PICO funds as a baseline. And what it attempts to do is to, quote, "control for" the state PICO allocation. So if you add the 2017-18 PICO to our 1819 village estimate, you get an allocation for charter schools at about $4.9 million. The funding source for that would be state PICO and the amount of $3.6 million, and then the district to pay the remainder at $1.3 million. And that would bring their total per-student allocation to $710. And so that's Option 1, to benchmark off of 1819, and as a, excuse me, to benchmark off of 1718, which was a year in which there was $50 million in state PICO funds. If you look at the Proposal 2, it benchmarks to the 2016-17 PICO funds, and so the methodology is the same. You take the 1617 state PICO, you add to it our village estimate for this year, and you have total capital funds to charter schools in Sarasota County of $5.5 million. You subtract the 3.6 million, and then our district allocation would be the 1.9 million. That would bring the total per-student allocation to $797, and it is the one that most closely resembles the allocation that they received in 2016-17, which is the last year before state involvement. The third proposal is to simply combine what they received in state PICO with our 30% allocation to come up with a total allocation of the $7.3 million. And so that would be funded 3.6 from PICO, and then we would be paying the 3.7, which is the 30% on a per-student basis. And that would bring the per-student allocation to 1,065, which essentially splits the difference between 1617 and 1718. I will catch my breath and field any questions that you have.
Does everyone follow that? Mr. Robinson.
I know I asked for it multiple times, and so I'm very grateful that you were eventually able to bring us the three-year averaging. I think it's important because when you're talking about how hard it is to budget because of the peaks and valleys, I think when you start averaging multiple years, it kind of creates a smoothing-out process, so to speak. So I think it's important to me when I'm looking, I'm looking at that smoothing-out process as the three years. And so from my point of view, when I look at the original, I'll call it Option 4. I think everybody knows what I'm talking about when I say Option 4.
No, I don't.
Okay, so Option 4 would be the one at the very top, would be the first one. So that would be the one that was presented originally. That's the original presented one. So you have Option 1, Option 2, Option 3, and then Option 4 is the one as originally presented by staff.
It's not in front of us.
It is in front of you.
That is correct. What he's referencing is the 1718 column, and that was what was presented in a number of our Board workshops as we were developing our budget.
That's the one that's been presented all along.
Right, right.
But I'm going to call that Option 4 because Option 0 isn't as palatable. So that one, it clearly shows that on a three-year average, they actually ended up better off than they were when this whole peaks and valley started because the three-year average when the peaks and valley started was 726, and now the peaks, the average would be 832. So it's roughly $100 more per student. All the other options are going to require us to take money from capital dollars from our existing schools and to move over. I understand you guys are looking at your individual charter schools, but I'll just take Venice as an example. When you go to, I was at Venice Middle today, and there's a lot of construction going on there. There's a lot of capital dollars going down there. You go down the street in Center Road down to, say, Garden, it's not as much as construction going down. So we don't, as a general rule, the school, our school district doesn't allocate our capital dollars per school, per student. So that's typically not the way we look at it, but I understand you guys are all district, discreet schools, and so we are having to look at it. So when I look at the budget that's originally presented, and I see that the three-year average, you're better off at the three-year average than you were when you started this ride where the state started interfering, I don't see the rationale to take money from the district and add it to even more when I see that they're actually better off today than they were three years ago. It only looks bad because of what happened last year. And so looking at the discreet, I've said this multiple times over multiple meetings, looking at the discreet last year and comparing it to this year and saying, oh, they're down, really isn't the right way to do it. So I'm very glad that we were able to do the three-year averaging. And I think if you look at the three-year averaging, I think the way the budget was originally presented by Mitzi all along was more than fair. So I support Option 4.
Thank you. Mrs. Brown.
I don't understand why the total per student has changed or is, because, or is that just the way we gave it before? Everybody was, the PICO dollars went per student. I mean, because, you know, especially when you look at Sky Academy, I mean, Sky Academy, like, say, in Proposal 2, it looks like they're getting $245. Am I accurate? And then it looks like...
I would tell you, if you're looking for...
Suncoast is...
Yeah, I would tell you that...
A thousand dollars. I mean, I don't understand why there's that, there's that huge difference. I mean, if we're going to be, I don't know what they were doing, but if we were going to be doing it, why don't we make it more even per school? I mean, why are we continuing giving different amounts to all the schools?
And so we do an allocation on a per-student basis. I would caution you not to use Sky Academy-Inglewood or either of the two military academies if you're trying to pick a school and follow it. As you'll recall, that military prep combined with SMA, so that has an effect on their calculation. And we heard this evening from the principal at Sky-Inglewood that their operations, as they have ramped up, their enrollment has increased. And so I would encourage you to, if you're trying to look at the impact on an individual school, is to pick one of the established charter schools and follow that line across. But Inglewood and the two SMAs are problematic just because of their history when you try to look at rolling averages.
Well, why then? I mean, I'm looking at SS, Suncoast School for Innovative Studies. Why is that at $1,000? I mean, or am I looking at, under Proposal 2, per student? I mean, is that, am I looking at, I mean, there's a lot of numbers here, but it looks like, why are they getting 1,000? And, you know, Arts and Sciences is getting 800, and, you know, geez, I need a rule. And then there's somebody else getting 600, the Suncoast Academy. I don't understand why there's the wide variation from school to school.
Because the allocation, neither on the local village or the state PICO, is just a flat-dollar figure for the current year's enrollment. It has to do, they also allocate based on average enrollment. And so as the principal from Sky-Inglewood explained, when PICO dollars are allocated, it's a three-year average that, for one of his cells, includes zero or is ramping up. And so it's not direct funding for the current year.
But as he said, though, if you use, if you're going to be averaging that out, I mean, you ought to throw out those years. He didn't get anything. Or should you? I mean, I don't know. Also, when we were looking at having to start sharing our local dollars with the charter schools, House Bill 7069, when it is the one that called for this, as it was moving through, it had some provisions in there that said the money couldn't go to a school that, I think, that had ownership in the building and that the school couldn't be paying higher than the market rent for the lease payments. At the end, that fell off. But I think that was pretty good provisions, and I don't know how our charter schools would hold up to that screening. But I think it's something that, especially if we're going to be sharing, you know, even our 30%, or whatever we're going to do next year, I think we need to look at, if not what the state requires us, but at least if we're going to be giving those dollars, I think some of those things are something that we need to look at in the future. I'm not saying we need to do it today because that's kind of thrown here at the last minute, but I think it's something that we need to look at in the future to make sure that these dollars are being used and they're being accountable. Because I want to make sure that these dollars aren't going out of state, you know, for something else. And I really would like to say, hey, wait a minute. If we're giving you dollars, don't be taking the management fee out of them. I mean, you know, why do you need a management fee when you're paying a lease payment? You know, what management is required for that? Those are some of the things I have a concern about when we're sharing the dollars. I do believe that it was a problem last year. You got, you got a lot of money. And then this year, the bottom fell out. So somehow we need to look at averaging that out. But I think we need to look at some of those other protections, too, if we're going to be looking at going forward. And as I said before, I want to work with you so that we all, with one voice, tell all of our legislators, what is our base student allocation? And how did you, how does that compare to last year? We need to make sure that every one of our legislators is watching that because every one of you need to be watching that, too, because that is what pays for your operations. And so we need to be holding their feet to the fire. And I want to do what's fair. I'm not quite sure on all of this which one I want to go to, but I just don't quite understand why there's that $750 difference from one school to the next, and is that fair?
Mrs. Zucker.
Eric, could you please tell me which one of these that you are referring to?
So the one I'm referring to is the very top, the, I'm looking at the Excel spreadsheet because it's attachment, the one that says 1819. The one that has average at 823.31.
823.
That is the one that we have voted on the past couple meetings. This one is the no change. This is the one that staff has presented. It has been voted on twice now, I think. So this is the one that we have approved in our budget the past two meetings, is that one.
So does this one take money from the charter schools?
Take money from...
Does it lower, does it lower? It doesn't...
It's the one that's already presented. It doesn't give or take away. It's exactly the amount that we had before. So they end up with, what, $3.5 million in this one?
We share $3.5 million.
We share $3.5 million. Their average for the past three years is $832 per student, which is $100 more than the average that they were getting, you know, before the legislature even got involved. So they're actually better off than they were before. But they're worse off than last year because last year was so, so much money. You also got to remember, I'm sorry, I was just answering a question. You also got to remember that the legislature in this, in the bill that created this situation also said that if they don't allocate the capital dollars, that it could end up coming out of our pocket next year. And so we all got to be cognizant of that, that the peaks and valley isn't going to end now just because they pass that law. The peaks and valley may continue. And so we need to make sure that we have enough capital reserves so that we can make sure that we're sharing, not just with our schools, but charter schools in the future.
All right, so you're...
May I, as a point of clarification?
Yes, please.
And the 2018-19 model, that is essentially what is currently contained in your budget, the charter schools would receive $3,627,545, and that would be exclusively from state PICO. And so I heard the term "share." I just wanted to clarify that the $3.6 million would be funded exclusively out of state PICO.
I'm sorry, I was just saying taxpayers in general. Sorry.
But for point of clarification, and I'm sorry, the 3.6, state PICO is the only item. There is no sharing, but there's that average example of 3.5. Oh, no. From the district as a comparison.
It would have their annual allocation at $525.05 per student and their three-year rolling average at $832.31.
Yeah, okay. That's the same. Sorry, Caroline, go ahead.
No, that's okay. I've been trying to understand this. I mean, it's true.
Yeah, no, no, this is, I'll tell you, it is helpful to have a financial person on the Board. So thank you. But really, it, this is complex, but once it's understood, I mean, I get where it's going, and I'm glad that we had different options. And I think kudos to Mr. Robinson for asking for the rolling, the three-year average because, to me, that made a big difference. So when I was looking through this, I mean, initially, I kind of thought, Proposal 2, using the benchmark of 2016-2017 PICO, I called it, I had it written down as like the Sarasota standard. It was pre any kind of legislation. And again, for a reminder, the state legislation impacts the entire state. Of course, that's us, but we were already voluntarily sharing dollars, and I think that, and so I think that there's, personally, I want that commitment to continue. And that's where I think that rolling average has been helpful because if you look at what's presented now, it does look like a big chunk of unexpected dollars that would not have been shared. I think the challenge is the volatility that's been expressed is, makes it harder for charter schools to prepare. But again, I kind of go back on, that's a continued, I mean, that's something we believe in continuing to share. But I also think we have to prepare for the unexpected, as would our charter schools. The one question I had, and this kind of doesn't, because security comes up a lot, and I know that there's a lot of, for all of us, high expectations in trying to rework our budgets and figure out, you know, what our priorities are. And I know that the safe school allocation did provide money to charter schools. Is that capital or is that operating?
That is categorical operating.
Operating, okay. I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure. Okay. So, but ultimately, I think when you look at it all like this, which it is a lot of numbers, but I want to be fair, I want to make sure the Board fully understands the various options that are presented. I know this is probably more prudent in the workshop, but we're also at a timeframe where we need to give them some kind of heads up. So I don't, I think now that I've seen it as presented and the rolling average, again, I was initially thinking Proposal 2 made the most sense to me. It seemed consistent with Sarasota County's standard, but when you compare it to the rolling average, I think you make a good point. So I would be leaning towards that direction. Mrs. Brown.
I folded this over, and I take what we've approved for 2016 and put that up to the totals for 20, let's say, let's say, looking at Item 2, you know, Proposal 2, and when you look at Proposal 2, for instance, Suncoast School for Innovative Study goes from $554 per student to 1,005. But Inglewood Sky Academy goes from 477 to 245. I don't, I don't know why we should be punishing them, why we should be taking money away from them, from what the state said. And I just, you know, some of them are making out very well in when you look at the differences. But when you look back to where they were at 2016-2017, it, I just, I have a problem when, and I don't know why it is, why would some of them go to over $1,000? And then you've got Sky Academy, who's going to be less? I don't think that's fair. I think there still needs, however we calculated this, it doesn't, it just doesn't seem fair to me that we would punish Sky Academy, and other people seem to make out well. I'm not quite understanding of how you do all this and where you came up with these numbers, but, and I got them late this afternoon. In fact, actually, when I got here, so I haven't had a chance to really look into them, but when you, when you see one school's getting $1,000 per student and another one getting $245, that's not fair. Not fair. So I'm looking at these proposals that we're getting, and I'm like, granted, you know, and I'm not sure, I'm not, I'm not totally sold on keeping currently where we are out either, but I think something should be done to help supplant that change. But I really can't go along with these proposals that we're getting when they're, when we're taking one school and punishing it, and another one, we're giving them a windfall. It doesn't, doesn't, doesn't compute to me.
Mrs. Goodwin.
One point. We have the Village, the Island Village School. They're getting quite a bit more money.
Which one are you looking at?
Some others because they are, they have several campuses that they've bundled together as one. So I think that, that makes an impact on some of the schools, Mrs. Brown, when we look at those. The PICO dollars that were not given to a newer school like Sky-Inglewood is a reason why their numbers are lower. And a rolling average is not a rolling average in the bank, is it? I mean, you know, the rolling average is the rolling average. And I think that looking at, I'm looking at Mr. Robinson's number one, four, or number one. Whatever.
Current.
Current. And then looking at Item Number 2, in Mr. Robinson's Number 4, it's pretty much PICO. Correct?
Right.
Which is the allocation this year. And I know that some schools last year received like 50, 75 bucks, you know, Lake County, for example, and Miami Dade and some of the bigger counties got much, much less than the 1,300 that we got here. So my dilemma is, I know that many of these schools really need the money for some options in capital and safety and security and those kinds of things, so that's my dilemma.
May I?
Go ahead, Dr. Button.
Let me make an attempt at simplifying because it seems like, from the four options, that really the discussion centers around two items. And so one is what is currently in the budget, which is to allow the charter schools to receive just state PICO dollars. The other is Proposal 2. So let me see if I can simplify the difference between what would be described as your current budget and Proposal 2. budget and Proposal 2. In the current budget, it accounts for last year's allocation. And so, if you were making an argument in favor of the status quo, you would say that on a three-year average, it puts them right back where they started, that the low is as low as the high was high. And so, if you look at where they are over the three-year period, they're right back where they started. If you look at Proposal 2, what Proposal 2 says is the 2017-18 was an abnormality, and the funding for this year is back at 2016-17. So, if you're benchmarking off of 2016-17, are you benchmarking it off of what they're receiving this year, or are you benchmarking it off of what they've received on the rolling average? So, do you or do you not want to account for last year's peak of $1,335? That's the fundamental difference between the two proposals.
But their peak is all low.
Correct.
Correct.
Right.
Yes, yes. The peaks and valleys offset under the status quo, and they're right back where they started. The other option is to say 2017-18 was an abnormality. Do we just want to fund them the way we did every year before the state got involved, which is where Proposal 2 takes you to?
But, but for clarity, because we don't know what next year will bring. And so, that's the challenge I find myself in. It's not just, it's almost a correction from the peak from last year to kind of get us back. Because if you actually look at the final numbers in comparison from Proposal 2, I'm looking at total per student, and I recognize to Mrs. Brown's point, this doesn't have an equal balance to each school, which that, I think, gives everyone heartburn, because that's not our, I mean, there's nothing about singling it out. That's the part that, I mean, that's the challenge. However, if, kind of forecasting and looking ahead, so we're not doing the bouncing back, because I really do philosophically want to be where we were regardless of what the state was doing before. But to the rolling average part, and being that last year was a bit of a peak, this is almost a correction. So, I don't know that I have been on one way or the other, but I think the two stand the most. I'm concerned financially for our district as we embark on some major, you know, capital projects and such. And so, I want to watch our budget tightly in a number of areas. So, that's my concern with Proposal 2, because that would deviate, actually, I'm glad I brought that up, deviate, put us short. But you mentioned something earlier about some money that may have been found that could maybe offset some of that shortage?
So, the current proposal currently is in our budget. Proposal 1 would have us funding $1.3 million that is currently not in your budget, and Proposal 2, $1.9 million that is currently not in your budget. But our $25 million Safety Security Initiative is coming in under budget. And so, the adjustment to the budget would be to bring the allocation for that project down to $23 million and allocate the $2 million to charter schools. That would be the offsetting action.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Robinson, and then Mrs. Goodwin.
First thing is, I want to, maybe I can help explain why there's a difference between the different schools, is PICO isn't, when we allocate our village, we're saying, this is total dollars, this is how much you students, and so, we're going to give it to you, an allocation. The PICO from the state does their allocation a little bit differently, because they're doing a rolling three-year average. And so, you're going to see that those schools that have the biggest differential, you're going, if you go back into their average count, you're going to see they probably had more students in prior years than they have now. So, now you're getting more money, dividing it up by less students, so then the dollars per students seems higher for those schools than those other schools. So, that is not something that we have control over. That is just how, that is how the PICO is divided up by the state. That's the first thing. And the second thing is, you've got to remember, you know, if you use these options where you put them back to where they are and you forget last year, you forget that the fact that we had to push things back. We had projects that we had to push back out. You forget the fact that, you know, if you're going to use the savings from the hardening, you're going to forget that the fact that we had to move projects back. We had to, you know, this is not, this is not a zero-sum game. I mean, if one wins, the other loses. We have projects that have been, that have been in the queue, in the five-year, that keep getting pushed farther to the left, that those projects need to be done. And I know we have angst, and we're looking at what it is for this one group of people. We also got to think about these other group of schools and these other projects that also need capital dollars. And so, to ignore what happened last year, which was our trough, and to recognize that we need, you know, we're spending all this money for capital security, those projects got pushed back last year because we had the issue last year. They got pushed back again because of safety and security. Those projects at some point need to be done, or it's going to affect the classrooms and the students. And so, at a certain point, we got to think about how to smooth that out. And we could be in the uncomfortable position if the legislature doesn't fund it, and we are not able to continue on. They may be back here last, next year and said, hey, you gave us all this money last year, how come you're not doing it again this year? And now, we even less money in our reserves to take care of the projects that are getting pushed back again because the legislature changed their minds. And so, again, for those reasons, I'm against maintaining the status quo. And I hope I answered your question of why, why there is a differential between the different charter schools, and that's because of the way the PICO funding is done through the state.
So, are you advocating for?
I'm advocating for the status quo.
Wait, is that Proposal 2?
That's Proposal 4.
Ultimately, it would require no action.
Yeah, but my proposal is to do nothing, maintain the one that the staff has been recommending all along.
We don't have that one.
Yes, you do. It's...
Mrs. Goodwin, also.
You do have it.
Well, here's the thing for me. You know, we really have had a good partnership with our charter schools, much more so than other districts in the state do. And yes, we need to really look at legislation this year and work together. This year's supposed to be a benchmark year, correct, Dr. Bowden?
That is correct.
And we do not have any idea as to what they're doing next year. And there has been some rumors, which may or may not be true, that PICO will go away for K-12 and be used to higher education. Have you heard that? I've heard that. So, you know, that may put us all into a different position altogether, because the higher education folks have been concerned that they're not getting enough money in colleges and universities and community colleges. So, that's of concern to me as well. I personally understand Mr. Robinson, and I think he's got a really good point, but I would like to see us do a heavy lift this year, one more year, but say, next year, it's what it is what it is. And I would like us to go with Proposal 2, because I think that our charter schools are in a bind with a lot of things out there. And I'm not going to make any promises about next year. It's going to be what it's going to be. But I really would like to see us, if we have the ability to do that, lend a helping hand to them. And yes, there are those projects that I'm concerned about as well as you, and I get that completely. But whether we understood it or not, or our charter partners understand it or not, we need to help them this year and then go forward next year with what happens, because I think it's very volatile. I think changes will be made, and we all need to be watching over this next session.
Mrs. Brown?
Well, I agree that Option 3 is not realistic for us, but I also don't like Option 2 because of the differences. We go from $245 per student to $1,005. I would prefer Proposal 1, where the differences between, the highest one, I believe, is $858 and down to $398. There isn't that volatility from one to another. And it also is only $1.3 million versus the $1.9. So, we use less money and we divide it more evenly. So, that's why I would go with Proposal 1. Option 4 looks good, too, because of some of the things that Mr. Robinson has said. But I also would like to see that, okay, we helped you this year. Now, next year, if they go and make us give you all that money again, I hope you let us deduct this from the amount that we were giving you before, so that you don't get that windfall, so that if, in fact, the legislature says, okay, give them the $6 million, that's the total amount that we were given, and we were going to give you the 3, too, I would say, okay, if we have to give that to you, whatever we give you this year, we're going to deduct from that 30% we gave you in previous years, so that we can balance out those dollars. I don't know how it's going to come out next year. We don't know. But I would go with Proposal 1, because I think that is fairer to the districts, to the different schools. There's not those wide variations of dollars, and I don't know why they are, but I would rather give it to them where we have more of them in the $700 range than going from $200 to $1,000. That just doesn't make any sense to me, why there's that variation from one to another. I mean, I can see why we had people here saying, well, we want Option 2 yet, because you get $800 here, you can only get $700 and something there. I'd say that, too. But what's more fair, I think, is Option 1, because you're looking at more schools getting a more even amount.
I want to address something on Sky Inglewood, is when you look at Sky Inglewood, both under Proposal 1 and Proposal 2, essentially, under both of those models is our calculation doesn't rise to the level of what their PICO allocation was. And so, if you allowed the spreadsheet to function the way it was set up, it would actually show a negative number, which would mean Inglewood would be sending us a check. And so, that's why you'll see in both ones, District Paid is zeroed out. And so, when you look at it, in Proposal 1, it shows Sky Inglewood getting $100,000, State PICO being $128,000. Certainly, we weren't asking them to send us a check for $20,000. So, under both models, they have 270 students, they have $128,000 as a state PICO allocation. That average is actually $477 per student, and that would be the same regardless of Model 1 or Model 2.
Sorry, we're all processing some...
Going with staff original recommendation. I make a motion, we go, we make no changes and go with staff recommendation.
A motion and a second? Any comments? So, I want to make sure everyone's clear. Technically, this wouldn't require an action, if I understand correctly.
It's Item 4 we said before, but it's the one that we have voted on previously. It's no change. It's the staff original recommendation.
Right. So, the board is clear, the motion that was made frankly doesn't really need to be a motion, because it's keeping, but you can reaffirm that.
Right.
The board can reaffirm that, since you're discussing it.
Right.
That would be to make no change to your current budget, and it is the, really, what's on the top of the information that you've received before we get to Proposal 1, 2, or 3. If you want, if the board wanted to incorporate any of Proposals 1, 2, or 3, then you would need to make a motion to adopt whichever one you chose. But the current motion is in effect to make no change.
Correct.
Thank you. Any comments? Any questions?
Okay.
I just want to make, fair enough.
I'm really concerned about our capital dollars and what we still need to spend, how much we still need to renovate our schools. I don't know how to get around that.
Mrs. Brown?
I'm conflicted on this. I'm really conflicted, because I know this is going to put some of our schools in a tight situation. But, you know, I think we warned them last year to be careful with that. And I don't know what next year will bring. I don't know, but I do know that we need to work together to tell our legislators they need to pay attention to the bottom line and how they affect us. And I'm going to go along with what is proposed, but it gives me heartburn. It gives me heartburn, because I know how this is going to affect some of our schools. But it's also going to affect us also. Although, I don't know. It's not fair. It's just not fair either.
Can I make a question?
Yeah, I can't sit...
But can I ask a question really quickly? Because I wanted to make sure from a clarify, clarify? Clarity standpoint. Again, I know that the motion on the floor basically, essentially, status quo based on but staff recommendation prior. But as it relates to Proposal 2, regardless of Proposal 2, I know, but you had mentioned, again, that coming in to our $25 million allocation for safe, for capital projects for safety and security, and we're coming in $2 million short, and that would be potentially reallocated to capital sharing with the district, with the charter schools. Am I understanding that correctly? Regardless of what proposal?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Okay. So, that's not included in any of the proposed budgets in front of us, because we didn't anticipate the $2 million savings.
That's correct. That answers the question of if we went with one of these models, how are you going to pay for it? Because every action has to have a...
Right.
Offsetting action. I would tell you that on Proposal 1 and 2, it would be offset in a decrease in the money that was allocated to the security upgrades.
But we still need to do those security upgrades. And have we paid for all the security upgrades that we have to do?
Currently, of that $25 million project, we have allocated less than 21. There's still work to be done in that area. But for the first round, we budgeted 25 and are at about 21.
So, it's not money that, so it's not money that's just sitting there, it's just the allocation of it, that you haven't used all of the allocation, but you're still needed.
Certainly. If you left that in the district coffers, a decision would be made whether you would spend it on safety and security, or you would go back to those projects that were displaced when we put the $25 million in the budget and moved essentially the entire first year of our five-year capital plan to the right. And so, that would be the decision to be made, is you're under budget on safety and security. Do you want to double back on safety and security and do some additional enhancements? Or do you want to allocate that to some projects that got bumped for safety and security in the first place?
Well, I hate to say this, but that's what I would like to do, because I know all of the projects that were bumped. I've been involved with some of them, and it wasn't fair. But we decided that's what we needed to do in order to be whole with the amendment. So, I'm sticking where I am.
Okay. I'm just going to close with, I am equally conflicted, because I, like I said before, I think Proposal 2 stuck out to me, and, but I also think that the rolling average gave me a different perspective, and we have, I think that's a fair way to look at it.
Right.
I wouldn't disagree. I don't, you know, I know that there's, we in Sarasota County, again, are very unique where we collaborate and have good partnerships, and I want that to continue. I'd love to know, and I know that there's autonomy, so we can't force any kind of collaboration, but I think it would benefit everyone if, how, to continue to improve it, not saying it's not there, to assist in the unknown, because they're all of our students. We don't want anyone to be sacrificed, but we just have a different budget. So, I'm going to, I will support the motion presented. I guess we'll do roll call.
No.
We're unanimous. We don't really have to do anything, really, but for record purposes, yeah, there is a motion on the floor.
You have a motion. You either need to vote on the motion, or the motion needs to be withdrawn.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Goodwin?
No.
Miss Shirley, Mrs. Brown?
No.
Mrs. Zucker?
Yes.
And the Chair... And the chair votes aye. The motion passes 3, 2, 2. And that concludes our new business items. Special announcements. Our next monthly work session is August 21st, 2018. Next regular board meeting is August 21st, 2018. At 3:00, sorry, there's not any, it's okay. Also, I want to wish everyone luck at the beginning start of school. Dr. Bowden?
Yes, tomorrow at 2 o'clock. We'll be swearing in a number of our officers and sergeants as we continue to build that force. That is at 2 o'clock tomorrow afternoon.
Where?
Right here.
Right here. Very good.
In the chambers.
Appreciate that. And again, best of luck to all of our students, teachers, staff, and families on an upcoming school year. Please be mindful of our buses and understand when to stop when our kids unload and load.
Yes, Carol.
I'll be watching. The meeting is adjourned.